Good evening and welcome to the reorganization meeting of the North Pocono School District Board of Education. We'd like to call the meeting to order. Can everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Farrar, at this time, can you please read the certificates of elections that are required by Section 402 of the Pennsylvania School Code, please?
Yes. The Board of Elections of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania certifies about that the returns of the municipal election held on the seventh day of November 2023, as filed in the Office of the Department of Elections, Lackawanna County, that Christopher Bassi, Timothy Bracy, Erin Fodaskanetsky, Sean Jennings, and Dennis Wolfe were duly elected to the office of North Pocono School Director as witnessed by the Board of Elections, the County of Lackawanna, by Elizabeth Hopkins, Director of Elections.
Judge Adcock, will you please join us at the podium? Judge, if you will just make sure that the on button gets you a green light?
I think it's on.
Okay, you'll have an open mic then? We're okay to have the candidates stay where they are? But they'll just need to stand when you're ready?
Certainly.
Okay.
And Dr. Powell, as I pledge to you, I've also made copies of the oath of office for each and every one of our newly elected school board directors.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening all, and to the newest members of the school board, congratulations. I can't tell you how much I honor each and every one of you that is here. As an elected official, I understand the time, the energy, the tensions within your family. I understand all of that. What I don't understand is you do it for free. At least I get paid. Before we get started, I would just like to point something out. I brought my mother with me this evening, number one, and she says to me, "Are all these folks up here school board members?" I said, "No, no, you know, we've got Joe O'Brien, he's our solicitor, and Dr. Powell, and our principal Ian Farr." And she said, "There's a lot of people here that are not, but we have our school board members here." And that got me to thinking. You know, it's funny, we talk about that. She says, "Boy, that's a lot of school board directors." Well, in 1954, three townships, Clifton, Springbrook, and Madison, joined together with Moscow Borough to form what was called East of the Mountain Joint Church School District. In April of 59, the district became known as the North Pocono Joint School District. The various areas included Clifton, Covington Township, Ellenhurst-Roaring Brook, Madison, and Springbrook Townships, along with the Borough of Moscow. Back then, we didn't have a Thornhurst Township. We had a Lehigh Township, Lackawanna, and a Lehigh Township, Wayne. Eventually, by 1960, Jefferson entered also. These townships, along with the Borough of Moscow, made up the North Pocono School District. The governing body for the school district, then and now, is known as the Board of Education, authorized under the Pennsylvania Public School Code in 1949. This organization, as they started to put it together, had school board members, not from each zone as we have now, District One, District Two, District Three, but every single municipality had their own school board. At the time of the creation of North Pocono School District, we had between 45 and 50 school board members at one time. So when my mother looks up there and says, "Wow, are they all school board members?" I'm like, "No, but they could be." Yeah, so we've come a long way since then, ever since we've created our different districts and we now have our school board members. And we've come a long way, but it wasn't that long ago. Sixty-some years ago. I'll keep the joke to myself, Dennis. Thanks. You're quite welcome. All right, first up, Christopher Bassi. Chris, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Christopher Bassi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey, and defend.
To support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Put your hand down. Christopher, you are hereby given and granted unto you full right and title to have and to execute all powers and authorities, and to receive and enjoy all and singular the emoluments unto said lawful office belonging to you while holding the title as North Pocono School District School Board Director. Congratulations. Mr. Shaun Jennings. Shaun, repeat after me.
I, Shaun Jennings.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey, and defend.
To support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth. Place your hand down. Shaun, you are by here given and granted unto you full right and title to have and to execute all powers and authorities, and to receive and enjoy all and singular the emoluments unto said office, lawfully belonging to you by virtue while holding the title as North Pocono School District School Board Director. Congratulations. Mr. Dennis Wolfe. Good evening and welcome to the reorganization meeting of the North Pocono School District Board of Education. We'd like to call the meeting to order. Can everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Farrar, at this time, can you please read the certificates of elections that are required by Section 402 of the Pennsylvania School Code, please?
Yes. The Board of Elections of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania certifies about that the returns of the municipal election held on the seventh day of November 2023, as filed in the Office of the Department of Elections, Lackawanna County, that Christopher Bassi, Timothy Bracy, Erin Fodaskanetsky, Sean Jennings, and Dennis Wolfe were duly elected to the office of North Pocono School Director, as witnessed by the Board of Elections, the County of Lackawanna, by Elizabeth Hopkins, Director of Elections.
Judge Adcock, will you please join us at the podium? Judge, if you will just make sure that the on button gets you a green light?
I think it's on.
Okay, you'll have an open mic then? We're okay to have the candidates stay where they are? But they'll just need to stand when you're ready?
Certainly.
Okay.
And Dr. Powell, as I pledge to you, I've also made copies of the oath of office for each and every one of our newly elected school board directors.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening all, and to the newest members of the school board, congratulations. I can't tell you how much I honor each and every one of you that is here. As an elected official, I understand the time, the energy, the tensions within your family. I understand all of that. What I don't understand is you do it for free. At least I get paid. Before we get started, I would just like to point something out. I brought my mother with me this evening, number one, and she says to me, "Are all these folks up here school board members?" I said, "No, no, you know, we've got Joe O'Brien, he's our solicitor, and Dr. Powell, and our principal Ian Farr." And she said, "There's a lot of people here that are not, but we have our school board members here." And that got me to thinking. You know, it's funny, we talk about that. She says, "Boy, that's a lot of school board directors." Well, in 1954, three townships, Clifton, Springbrook, and Madison, joined together with Moscow Borough to form what was called East of the Mountain Joint Church School District. In April of 59, the district became known as the North Pocono Joint School District. The various areas included Clifton, Covington Township, Ellenhurst-Roaring Brook, Madison, and Springbrook Townships, along with the Borough of Moscow. Back then, we didn't have a Thornhurst Township. We had a Lehigh Township, Lackawanna, and a Lehigh Township, Wayne. Eventually, by 1960, Jefferson entered also. These townships, along with the Borough of Moscow, made up the North Pocono School District. The governing body for the school district, then and now, is known as the Board of Education, authorized under the Pennsylvania Public School Code in 1949. This organization, as they started to put it together, had school board members, not from each zone as we have now, District One, District Two, District Three, but every single municipality had their own school board. At the time of the creation of North Pocono School District, we had between 45 and 50 school board members at one time. So when my mother looks up there and says, "Wow, are they all school board members?" I'm like, "No, but they could be." Yeah, so we've come a long way since then, ever since we've created our different districts and we now have our school board members. And we've come a long way, but it wasn't that long ago. Sixty-some years ago. I'll keep the joke to myself, Dennis. Thanks. You're quite welcome. All right, first up, Christopher Bassi. Chris, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Christopher Bassi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey, and defend.
To support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Put your hand down. Christopher, you are hereby given and granted unto you full right and title to have and to execute all powers and authorities, and to receive and enjoy all and singular the emoluments unto said lawful office belonging to you while holding the title as North Pocono School District School Board Director. Mr. Timothy Bracy Jr., raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Timothy Bracy Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey, and defend.
To support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Please your hand down. Timothy, you are hereby given and granted unto you full right and title to have and to execute all powers and authorities, and to receive and enjoy all and singular the emoluments unto said office, lawfully belonging to you by virtue while holding the title as North Pocono School District School Board Director. Congratulations. Mr. Shaun Jennings. Shaun, repeat after me.
I, Shaun Jennings.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey, and defend.
To support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Put your hand down. Erin, you are hereby given and granted unto you full right and title to have and to execute all powers and authorities, and to receive and enjoy all and singular the emoluments unto said lawful office belonging to you while holding the title as North Pocono School District School Board Director. Mr. Timothy Bracy Jr., raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Timothy Bracy Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey, and defend.
To support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Please your hand down. Shaun, you are by here given and granted unto you full right and title to have and to execute all powers and authorities, and to receive and enjoy all and singular the emoluments unto said office, lawfully belonging to you by virtue while holding the title as North Pocono School District School Board Director. Thank you all. Ms. Erin Fodaskanetsky, raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me.
I, Erin Fodaskanetsky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support, obey, and defend.
To support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth.
Put your hand down. Erin, you are hereby given and granted unto you full right and title to have and to execute all powers and authorities, and to receive and enjoy all and singular the emoluments unto said office, lawfully belonging to you by virtue while holding the title as North Pocono School District School Board Director. Congratulations. Mr. Dennis Wolfe.
Mr. Wolfe, repeat after me. I, Dennis Wolfe. Do solemnly swear. To support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this great Commonwealth. Please your hand down. Shaun, you are by here given and granted unto you full right and title to have and to execute all powers and authorities, and to receive and enjoy all and singular the emoluments unto said office, lawfully belonging to you by virtue while holding the title as North Pocono School District School Board Director. Thank you all.
Ms. Erin Fodaskanetsky, raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me.
I, Erin Fodaskanetsky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome everybody here to this reorganization of the board. Feel free to come again. It's always good when there's members of the citizens here, citizenry here. The first matter is possible agenda revisions. Are there any agenda revisions? Public participation. Act 93 of 1998 provides the opportunity for district residents and taxpayers to make public comments to the board. The act also permits the board to adopt reasonable rules to regulate public participation in the board meeting. Any member of the public who has comments for the board, for this board, was asked to submit their comments by 5:30 PM today. Any member attending in person that has comments for the board is asked to comply with the following rules. Your comments be limited to five minutes. At four minutes and 30 seconds, a warning bill will be issued. You direct your comments to the board president. You practice reasonable decorum in your comments, and you begin by stating your name, address, and group affiliation, if any.
We do not have anyone on the sign-up sheet, and there is one electronic communication, but we will take care of that in our regular agenda. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the board at this time?
Good evening. Ralph Antedorme of Madison Township, former board member. I just want to congratulate the new members. I think they're crazy for getting on there because it's not an easy job at times. And I was told a long time ago when I got on the board, your friends become your enemies, your enemies may become your friends. But it'd be nice if we can get along. I want to congratulate all you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Antedorme.
Any other public comment? The first matter on the agenda is a report of the nominating committee for the office of board president. Committee Chair was Howard McIntosh. Mr. McIntosh, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I move to appoint Sean Jennings as president of the North Pocono School Board. I need a second, please.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Powell.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine zero.
Second matter on the agenda is the report of the nominating committee for the office of board vice president. Mr. McIntosh?
Yes, sir. I move to appoint Christopher Bassi as board vice president of the North Pocono School Board. I need a second, please.
Second by Mrs. McLean.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine zero.
The next matter is a motion to reaffirm Board of Education policy 010, Board of Governance Standards Code of Conduct, attached to the documents as Exhibit A. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIntosh.
I think we need to actually somebody make it.
So because Mr. O'Brien is not a member of the board, can somebody make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Powell makes the motion. It is seconded by Mr. McIntosh. On the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero.
The next item, we need a motion to reaffirm the North Pocono School Board protocols previously adopted on June 11, 2020, Board of Education meeting, attachment B.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jennings makes that motion.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Powell. On the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero.
The next matter on the agenda is a motion to adopt PSBA, that's Pennsylvania School Board Association, Principles for Governance and Leadership. They're attached as Exhibit C. Do we have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Powell moves to make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jennings. On the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero.
The next motion is to establish times and dates for Board of Education meetings and work sessions for 2024. They're proposed on attachment D. Do we have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Jennings.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIntosh. On the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero.
Finally, can we have a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order, revised 11th edition, as the parliamentary procedure, Rules of Order, for the Board of Education?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Powell. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Wolfe. On the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine zero.
There being no other business at this reorganization meeting, a regular meeting will follow, can we have a motion to adjourn this reorganization meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Powell. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Jennings. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the North Pocono School District Board of Education December meeting. If we could all please stand again and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the public and states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, if I may, ask for a moment of silence in recognition of the contribution of Richard Dean Almany, who passed away on Sunday, December 3, 2023. Mr. Almany was the North Pocono School Director from 1964 to 1978. During his time on the board, he held the office of president in 1967 and again in 1974, and also held the office of vice president in 1966, 1971, 1973, and again in 1976. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Mr. Farr, roll call.
Mr. Bassi.
Here.
Mr. Bracy.
Here.
Ms. Skanetsky.
Here.
Mr. Jennings.
Here.
Mrs. Marrows.
Yeah.
Mr. McIntosh.
Yeah.
Mrs. McLean.
Yeah.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Wolfe.
Present.
Mr. Castro Giovanni.
Here.
Ms. Disipio.
Here.
Ms. Kutra. Nine board members present, two student representatives present.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Mr. McIntosh, would you read our mission statement?
The mission of the North Pocono School District is to educate and challenge all students to their maximum potential and prepare them for the demands of a global society.
Thank you. President's announcements. Executive session for personnel reasons was held on Thursday, December 7, 2023 at 6:00 PM here in the high school library. A work session was conducted on Monday, December 4, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the intermediate school library. An executive session for personnel reasons was also held on Monday, December 4, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the intermediate school library. And an executive session for personnel reasons was held on Thursday, November 30, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the intermediate school library and virtually as well. Discussion on proposed action on business before the board. Are there any agenda revisions?
There are no revisions.
Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to share some good news. The North Pocono Scholastic Team here at the high school successfully took the NEIU championship position for the second year in a row. Not only that, but they moved forward into the final round of WVIA Scholastic scrimmage, taking second place in the overall competition between NEIU 19, LIU 18, and CIU 20. Put them in second place position out of roughly 40 schools in northeast Pennsylvania, and they scored a $3,000 cash prize for their successes. Team members include Captain Noah Beckish, Grace Beckish, Minerva Correa, Stephanie Arias, Evangeline Clausen, Elizabeth Donovan, and Raina Nemitz. Congratulations to them and Mr. Wilber for their successful venture into the Scholastic scrimmage. Also, received correspondence from a parent of a middle school student who participated in the Marywood Win Celebration last Friday and Saturday held at Marywood University. Obviously, it is a diverse group from across the region with, I believe, over 20 schools participating. She wanted to personally thank Mrs. Castaldo for all of her work with the group. It's not an easy task to organize students from various schools at various levels into a beautiful performance that took place on Saturday night. This particular student actually was in another competition during the day, but while away from practice, raved about the program and how involved Mrs. Castaldo was. So I'd like to thank her and Mr. Montura for encouraging the arts and for our middle school students to perform in such a beautiful ensemble. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Always encouraging to hear our students doing well. Informational reports or informational items reports. Mr. Collins, would you do student recognition for us?
Thank you. We have three outstanding seniors to recognize this evening. First student to be recognized is Alexis Smalls-Charles. Alexis Smalls-Charles is the daughter of Richard and Nicole Charles. Alexis is a member of the National Honor Society, having earned high honors and will complete 12 AP courses by graduation. A two-year member of the Science Olympiad team, Alexis won several awards, first in bridge, first in experimental design, and third in remote sensing at the regional competition, and eighth in experimental design, and tenth in remote learning, oh, excuse me, remote sensing, at the state competition. A four-year member of PJAS, Alexis won second award at regionals in her first two years and first award at regionals and states in her junior year. A three-year Latin student, in the national Latin exam, Alexis received the Maxim Cum Laude Award for Latin I and Latin II, and the highest Summa Cum Laude Award in Ford Latin III. Alexis served on student council throughout her junior high and high school, serving as class president grades eight through 10, and student council representative grades 11 and 12. She also volunteers with the Red Cross Club, Mini-Thon, SAD, and True. Athletically, Alexis has played on the high school soccer team for four years, played basketball for three years, and played softball for four years. Alexis works at the JCC Summer Camp and at the Hybridge House throughout the year. Alexis also co-founded the STEM Knights Group, where she volunteered to teach STEM activities to local Girl Scouts. Upon graduation, Alexis plans to pursue a degree in engineering. I'm proud to introduce to you Alexis Smalls-Charles.
I would like to take this time to thank the people who have made this possible. First, I would like to thank my family. My mother and my father have always supported me, and without them I would not have been able to succeed. They are with me here tonight. And I would also like to thank my teachers, the administration, and the board for creating an environment that made it so easy to learn and grow. And lastly, I'd like to thank my peers for receiving this award with me tonight. They are some of my closest friends, and I would not have made it through high school without them. So I'd like to thank them and congratulate them as well.
Our next student to be recognized tonight is Ava Paps. Ava Paps is the daughter of William and Jamie Paps. She is currently taking six AP classes this year for a total of nine AP classes in her high school career. Ava has earned the AP Scholar Award and the Rural and Small Town Recognition Award by the College Board. She has consistently held high honors throughout her high school career. Ava is an active member of the National Honor Society, currently serving as the secretary, and she is vice president of Mathletes. Ava is also a member of the Red Cross Club, Interact Club, SAD, Student Council, Mini-Thon, and the Tobacco Resistance Club. Ava is an active member of the community and volunteers her time, helping with the cultural and historical societies, the library, and her local fire department. Ava is a Red Cross certified and has been employed as a childcare provider for families within the local North Pocono community. Upon graduation, she plans to pursue a Bachelor of Science degree in electrical engineering. Proud to introduce to all of you Ava Paps.
I'm so thankful for this honor. I would like to thank the people who have shaped the student, and more importantly, the person I am today. I would not be here today without the support of those around me throughout my academic career. Most of all, I'd like to thank my family who are here tonight, minus my older brother, for pushing me to do my best, and my teachers at North Pocono for providing me with a challenging and engaging learning environment. I am happy to be a student of North Pocono, and I would like to thank the school board for honoring all of our achievements tonight.
Our third student to be recognized this evening is Kaylee Whiteford. Kaylee Whiteford is the daughter of Jennifer Guegor and Rich Whiteford. Kaylee has taken advantage of the academic offerings in her senior year by taking challenging courses such as AP Chemistry, AP Physics II, AP Calculus AB, AP Literature and Composition, and AP Psychology. Over the course of high school, Kaylee has taken 10 AP credits and received high honors every quarter. She also holds leadership positions throughout North Pocono. Kaylee is the executive treasurer of student council and vice president of the Interact Club. As a member of the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science, Kaylee has competed for six years, earning first awards at the regional and state level. She is a four-year member and captain of the North Pocono Varsity Soccer Team, Girl Soccer Team, and Varsity Softball Team. Kaylee is currently employed at two jobs, Dalish and Riverfront. After graduation, Kaylee will major in biochemistry and one day hopes to become a pharmacologist. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you Kaylee Whiteford.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank a few people who have made me the student I am today. I am thankful for this award, but most importantly, the people who have and continue to support me throughout my high school years. I would like to thank the school board, the administration, and my teachers for providing me the education and necessary skills to excel in the classroom. I would also like to thank my friends, including my peers here today, and my family, especially my mom, for being one of my sources of encouragement through all my successes and failures. Thank you.
Mr. Farr, Dr. Powell, and the entire school board, as always, thank you so much for reserving time each and every month to recognize our best and brightest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Do we have our student reports?
Yes, for CTC, we are currently doing the shadowing program in which students can come and shadow different classes that they're interested in, and we have a few more left to do of those. And then we are also starting a competition at the school, which is a door decorating competition, and it's just a fun competition between all the classes in which they can earn our version of Spirit Week points, which we call CTE points. So that's starting next week.
For student council, in November, the annual drive to benefit the North Pocono Food Pantry was a huge success. The student body collectively raised over 8,000 canned goods to benefit those in need. Spirit Week points were also awarded to each class who raised the most. We also held our Thanksgiving pep rally to announce the total and do themed competitions for the holiday. Now in December, we are hosting a new contest to help involve and support our school organizations and clubs. We are doing a wreath decorating contest. Every club who wanted to participate got a wreath and decorated it to represent their club. They are all being hung in the foyer of the school tomorrow and will be voted on by the student body. They were all, the winners get $100 for first place, 75 for second, and 50 for third for their club to use. We will also have our annual holiday Spirit Week, the last week of school before break, that is that is themed days and a day to give back to the student body, where the student council will serve hot chocolate or cookies to the students. We are also currently planning our winter and, or winter sports and Christmas break pep rally for the twenty-second. At this pep rally, we will recognize our winter sports teams and certain clubs like our Science Olympiad Team, Mock Trial, and Mathletes. We'll also have holiday-themed games, our annual ugly Christmas sweater contest for students and for teachers, and announce the winners of the wreath contest. Um, the senior class is also working on their annual Christmas project. Students are assigned a child in the community and help their families by buying them gifts for Christmas. Seniors who volunteered were given a child's name, their wish list, and, um, some information about them last Friday, and the gifts will be given to the families on the fifteenth.
Thank you. Superintendent, Dr. Powell?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I think the, the board would be remiss if we did not acknowledge today, um, December seventh, uh, as a day marking eighty-two years since the surprise attack on the U. S. Neville Base at Pearl Harbor, Hawaii. Uh, so when we, uh, enjoy our American ideals and freedoms, uh, because of the battles fought in that war and wars won, uh, please make sure that we thank a veteran, especially on a day, uh, as revered as today. Uh, and also, we would like to, uh, wish our friends celebrating Hanukkah, uh, a healthy and, uh, happy celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Now, do my fellow directors have any informational reports? Hearing none. Public participation. Act Ninety-three of nineteen ninety-eight provides the opportunity for district residents and taxpayers to make public comments to the board. The act also permits the board to adopt reasonable rules to regulate public participation in the board meeting. Any member of the public who has comments for the board was asked to submit their comments by five thirty P. M. Any member attending in person that has comments for the board is asked to comply with the following rules. Your comments be limited to five minutes. At four minutes and thirty seconds, a warning bell will be issued. You direct your comments to the board president only. You practice reasonable decorum in your comments, that you begin by stating your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Do you have none correct, Mr. Farr?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, we do have one online comment that was submitted, uh, which I'll now read. Kristen O'Donnell from Jefferson Township writes, "At the eleven-six twenty-twenty-three work session, I asked about the large girls' bathroom in the cafeteria being limited to one to two girls at a time. Is this still a limitation? If so, how many? If so, when do you think this will be lifted?" Thank you.
Uh, there is, uh, currently monitoring that's going on, especially during the cafeteria periods, uh, with the amount of students entering our, uh, large bathroom facilities. Uh, it is not one to two students. I'd probably say it's more around, uh, three or four at a time. Uh, obviously, there has been some, um, safety, uh, and some discipline issues, uh, that are, um, kind of dictating the, the monitoring. Uh, so we are doing that. Uh, we do not have long queues of students waiting to use the restroom, and every student, uh, during that timeframe does have opportunity to use facilities, uh, whether in that large group or in others. Um, I can't say specifically that we have a, uh, targeted, uh, timeline to remove that. I guess it will depend on, uh, how our, uh, behaviors are rectified, uh, in that particular location.
Uh, no one had signed up on the participation sheet, however. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come to the microphone at this time?
Good evening, Mark E. Faltz, Springbrook Township. Uh, two quick questions. Uh, first one, are teachers fully certified before they're hired and start working? And question number two, uh, regarding a current situation, uh, bus drivers, I see there's several on here to be approved for tonight. Is, are they allowed to drive before they're approved at this meeting?
Uh, to answer your first question, Mr. E. Faltz, with regards to a permanent position, uh, teachers must be properly certified to obtain that position. Uh, when there are long-term substitute positions or, uh, even short-term substitutes, uh, sometimes emergency certification would be granted for that individual to provide service for us. Uh, so, uh, there's a distinction there. Uh, with regards to, uh, bus drivers, uh, we vet with the contractors, uh, and the district, uh, with the Department of Transportation, proper certification before the drivers, uh, get behind the wheel.
So is it, is it possible that someone on this list to be approved tonight is already driving?
Uh, yes, there would be because the, uh, proper paperwork, uh, has satisfied the Department of, uh, Department of Transportation, and then the board will ratify the approval of that driver.
Okay, so specifically employed by Roar or Bus, if one of these two people here are in question as to my concern with Mr. Farr, I respectfully ask you to table their approval until we completely solve the current situation with that driver. Mr. Farr is aware, I don't know if anybody else is aware, but there, my son is complaining about safety problems on the bus with his new driver, and I don't feel that that driver should be certified by this board until the situation is rectified, completely to my satisfaction. Safety of our children should be the utmost important thing when it comes to the drivers that are hired for this district, and along with everything that should be. So with that said, I think that this person should not be approved. Mr. Farr knows who it is. I'm not sure which one it is. But the dangerous activities from this driver do not warrant them being allowed to be certified at this point.
Mr. E. Faltz, if I may, uh, first of all, uh, safety of our students and staff is of the utmost importance to this administration and board, uh, which I think you would agree.
I do.
There is, um, an incident that you're referring to. Uh, it does not mean that that particular driver could not be, uh, presented to the board for approval. Once again, all of the paperwork meets, uh, Department of Transportation qualifications. Uh, if there are issues, which there could be issues with veteran drivers of thirty-plus years, uh, they are thoroughly vetted and investigated, uh, which will happen in this case and is already happening, uh, I, I think you could speak to that with your communication with Mr. Farr. Uh, so I think the board has heard your petition, uh, and we will let the, uh, board decide on whether or not they'll table, uh, any portions of a, uh, motion or if they choose to vote on it themselves.
Does everybody on the board know what I'm speaking of?
Uh, there was discussion in executive session on, uh, details of your complaint.
Well, I'm speaking to all the members of the board. I'm asking you, as a parent, and you're all parents, to not approve this person until the matter is satisfied. I do agree that this district takes safety highly, but this driver has been doing stuff that's against the rules, and I don't think they should be certified by the board until the matter is completely cleared up and they can prove that they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. E. Faltz.
Me again, you guys know who I am.
Please, please, though, just because we love hearing it on tape, can you identify yourself and where you're from, please?
Anyhow, listen.
Come on, Mr. Anadorme, you know the rules. Please identify yourself and where you're from.
Ralph Antedorme, Ralph Dominic Antedorme, Madison Township, eighty-four years old. I used to be a board member, former board member. Anything else you want?
No.
I come here all the time for you guys to make, uh, make me silly, right?
I know you do. We just want to follow protocol. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyhow, I come from one of the biggest families in North Pocono. I got older brothers and younger brothers. They're all over eighty, and I know what yous forget, the new members that got on this board, that someday you're gonna look as good as me when you get that old, okay? You're gonna be old enough, and I'd like to be pushing that and give a little break to the senior citizens, not only my family. Because I, you know, you got, you got a bus trip here that's, uh, two of them, five thousand dollars. I don't have nothing against that, but you know what? You're still taking my money, right? Everybody's money, okay? Do we have to do it every year, go to Boston? According to this, this is the annual trip. It's still money. I'm not, I'm not begrudging anybody of anything, but you know what? Priority is academics. Not all the sports, not everything. We got every kind of sport in the country. What's next? It didn't used to be that way. My sport was W. O. R. K. Me and my seven brothers. One graduated from this school there, and he was president of his class, the old, the new school. But anyway, I don't want yous to forget about that over eighty. I mean, I'm only, I'm only eighty-four, I'm not old, you know what I mean?
I understand.
Because I'm gonna boycott it. And maybe I'm gonna get a few of the brothers here to give you a hard time also. And then another thing, you know, we used to have rebuttal after the meeting. When you guys come up with something, we can't speak after. How can we question anything? How, how do you question everything before the question comes out? You know, I might not be a rocket scientist, but you know, that's crazy. We used to have it. We had some long meetings. We don't need no long meetings, but it'd be nice to have a rebuttal after the meeting to a certain extent, in case somebody wants to ask you something. I'm, I'm representing a lot of people, and you know what they tell you? Well, what the taxes are raising, this and that? They don't wanna come to the board meeting, but they squawk about it later. You know what? I'd get in front of the president, I don't give a damn who he is, you know what I mean? He's younger than me. If you got something to say, come out and approach the board. And you're the new president?
Mr. Jennings.
Who's the new president? Mr. Jennings?
Mr. Jennings is our new president.
Never mind about you. Anyway, you're true, uh, and, and Mr. Dennis, I don't know why you're here again. I was here the first time you were here. Listen, Merry Christmas, all you guys.
I've been waiting all, all, all week just to see you, Ralph.
Yeah?
Honestly, God. See you later.
Thank you, Mr. Anadorme.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak with, uh, at the microphone? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Action on business before the board. Have a motion to approve the agenda of action on business before the board. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIntosh.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on November ninth, two thousand twenty-three, attachment A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McLean.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
I have a motion to nominate and appoint Timothy Bracy, Jr. to serve as the North Pocono School District Representative to the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County Joint Operating Committee Board, or JOC, for the term of December two thousand twenty-three to December two thousand twenty-six. May I have a second?
Second.
I'll second that. Second by Mr. Bassi.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Wolf?
No.
Put the second.
No, that was Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Apologies. Motion passes nine-zero.
Personnel, Mr. McIntosh, if you would.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. I move to accept with regret the following resignations as listed. I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McLean.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes nine-zero.
I move to approve the following leaves as listed. I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jennings.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
I move to approve the following appointments as listed. I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McLean.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
I move to approve the following student placements and out-of-travel is list, uh, out-of-state travel is listed. I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Fotum.
On the question, all, all, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I move to approve creating a technology education club at the high school. I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mrs. McLean.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
I move to approve creating an advisor position for the technology education club at the high school. I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bassi.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
That's all I have, Mr. Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Transportation, Mr. Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. I have a motion to approve the following drivers as listed, all per, all paperwork on file. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jennings.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes nine-zero.
Finance, Mrs. McLean.
Thanks, Mr. Jennings. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Five of two thousand twenty-three pertaining to the school district tax index for two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five, attachment C? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jennings.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
Do I have a motion, I have a motion to ratify and appoint the fi, the filing of the petition for appeal from the decision of the Board of Assessment Appeals of Lackawanna County relative to the property identified as Lackawanna County PIN sixteen zero zero four dash zero one zero dash zero zero four, owned by SMGC Realty LP. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIntosh.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
I have a motion to approve an agreement with Burke One for two thousand twenty-four, Act Eighty, Comparison Services, attachment D. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jennings.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
Do I have a motion to approve the following financial reports as listed? Activity Fund Summary Report for the period ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three; Athletic Fund Treasurers Report for the period ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three; Capital Projects Treasurers Report for the period ending October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three; Treasurers Report for the period ending October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Please see attachment E. Do I have a second?
Second by Mrs. Fotum.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
I have a motion to approve payment of the general fund bills, attachment F. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jennings.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
Do I have a motion to approve payment of the capital project fund disbursements, attachment G? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bassi.
On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes nine-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McLean. Is there any old business? New business? The work session of the North Pocono Board of Education will be held Monday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P. M. in the intermediate school library. The regular meeting of the North Pocono Board of Education will be held Thursday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P. M. in the North Pocono High School Auditorium. I'll make a motion to adjourn, adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
All those, on the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?